Next is member Sparsa.
Hey Kevin, I just have one question. You know, with respect to the right, you know, the passengers at the airport, what kind of decrease, if any, do we see during recessionary times?
Was it 12% Lino? In 2009, when the kind of that peak of the recession, we saw a 12% decrease. And I will say that when we are planning ahead for the airport and we're looking at doing these expansion projects, we modeled that type of recession to make sure that we can meet all of our industry financial metrics and we won't dip below any in terms of debt service coverage ratio, cash on hand, being able to maintain the facilities, being able to maintain the staffing. And so even with our projected costs to run a facility like this with this growth, if we were to have another recession just like that one, and let's say it's a tw- was, for the airport, it was a 12% drop, we would still meet metrics that we need to, to ensure we're not behind the curve.
Okay, yeah.
And that's part of the exercise we went through.
Yeah, that was my next question was what, you know, how does that impact what we're doing today? You know, that seems like worst case scenario. I hope that this next time around, we don't see 12%, it's less than that hopefully.
Yeah, and we think it will be, but still, it was a good number to target.
Okay, thank you Kevin.
Thank you.
Next is member Brettafield. You have the floor. And I'll close it up.
Couple of quick questions. You know, we used to have the Cessna dealership out there. That's long gone. We had a flight school that closed. Do you get involved in any of that? I mean, I know that's private sector, but it would seem to me it'd be great if we did have those kinds of schools available for people to share their interest in aviation and most cities have it. Fresno seems to be lacking in that area.
You know, we have not had any industry interest. We do reach out, but I will say this, and I think you have experienced this, I personally have as well, when we learned to fly.
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't use a school. I went, you know, I found there was an instructor and he had a plane and I went out to the airport and we did it, right? So we are still seeing that activity happening at both airports in terms of the availability of instructors and aircraft for somebody to go out there. And businesses, even though it's not a dedicated flight school business, but there's businesses out there that you can contact if you want to learn to fly. And that is a big, big deal because from a commercial standpoint, as you're aware, there is this huge pilot shortage. So we're trying to do our part with regard to that. So, and again, as I mentioned earlier, the item that we're coming before council on the 20th is going to be for an FBO at Chandler. And if somebody wants to instruct, that would be a great venue for them to instruct because they'll also have fueling available, et cetera.
Okay. And yes, Councilman Arias mentioned about going back to Washington. I wasn't going to mention that. I heard that he went back to, for a pilgrimage to the self avowed socialist Andrea Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez and lobbied, I guess on water issues, but I would encourage him the next time he goes on that pilgrimage, you might want to address some of the airport issues and some of the other things from the Congresswoman from the Bronx, since you like to go back there and apologize unnecessarily for Grizzlies events, you might want to go back there for the things we need for airports.
I'll be happy to invite you on the pilgrimage.
I will not go on taxpayer money. That was a waste of money.
Okay folks, let's stay focused on the budget. We have some requests for second speakers, but I haven't spoke for the first time. And Kevin, again, airport, your team, fantastic. You are truly a jewel, as one of my colleagues mentioned earlier. And I really appreciate it. And as I recall, the terminal is the far end of the terminal near the airline fields, the pavement is to sort of look like El Capitan at Yosemite. So we're trying to fold in different things from our region, as I understand it.
Yes, absolutely.
To showcase that for people coming from all over the world.
And the amount of people who stop and put it on social media, take pictures today is the same number, more numbers than we saw when we first put it in, you know, 12, 13 years ago.
Fantastic. Now, my notes here on B-20 indicate that you only have one custodian budgeted for the airport, and I'm prepared to make a motion to expand that if that would help you and your team with the airport and keeping it clean. It's a huge facility. And that seems kind of interesting, but I'm prepared to do that if you'd like to have me make that kind of motion.
And I do appreciate that, but I, my suggestion would be this, we have been experiencing a tremendous amount of growth. We do have a lot of needs. I would characterize this budget as conservative. That said, my intention is to come back to council just a little bit later in this fiscal year because we're so late in the process. And remember, when we start building these budgets and we start looking at projections, this is six, eight, nine months ago, when you start trying to put something together. And you know, what are the airlines going to do? What's the growth going to be? Well, we know it was, blew everything out of the water from what we thought even six months ago and it's, and then looking ahead, it's still going to continue to do that. So I would say that this is a very measured and cautious approach now. It may look a little different if I'd have known today what I knew, you know, if I knew six months ago what I know today, it would be a little different. So that said, I do plan on coming back to council later on in this fiscal year to try and continue to address the fact that we have been growing. So I do appreciate that. And I will say this, when we do that, we, just as member Sparsa mentioned, we calculate, what happens if we have a recession? Can we afford to do this? And the answer is yes. I will never come before this body and request anything that we cannot afford on a sustained level, year in, year out. And that's what it's all, you have to plan for the future like that.
We sincerely appreciate that, honestly. That's, that should be a standard for everything we do as a city of Fresno. Okay, with that, again, congratulations. Thank you. You are a jewel and it's exciting to go out to the airport, even for the events like we did the other night, as well as the international flights, our direct flight to Chicago. I know you're working on Southwest, so we'll keep putting a twist on their arm as well.
There's a lot more out there than Southwest, but yes, there's, there's a lot, a lot of irons in the fire.
I think that was a good negotiation point we just put on the record. Very good. Okay, now we'll go for second request to speak, member Soria.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to ask one question and follow up with what my council colleague brought up about the advertisement. So you mentioned that the revenues that we get are about 176,000. I think that if I remember correctly, we were speaking about this issue maybe last week or so, and you mentioned that we actually contract out with an ad agency. Is that correct?
Yeah, so most airports in the United States have advertising contracts. For us, it's Clear Channel. We've had them for a few years now. And so they go out and they basically manage the process, they get the advertising in and they, but they have to go through us to approve it. Obviously, we look at the artwork and things like that. And the contract that we have with Clear Channel is, is per the airport industry standards in terms of the, there's a percentage of gross we get out of, and I don't, what, Michael?
What's the percentage?
Is it 50%? No? We can get you that information specifically, and we have the contract on file with the clerk's offices, but we can get that, I can get that for you.
Okay, perfect. So the percentage and then also, when will, does it go out to bid after the contract expires? How long have we had Clear Channel?
I'd have to also get that information for you when we let that contract.
That would, that would be good to know.
Yes.
And typically, do we put it out every few years? I know you may not know the...
Generally, it's around a five years. Pretty typical, I mean, most concessions are five years and then sometimes if they're doing a really good job and they're willing to make investment into the airport, then we can consider an extension. But if that were to happen, it would be go for this body, whether or not that's, you know, legitimate to do versus a new recruitment.
Okay, so, and we'll, you'll check to see when it will be up? Because I, at least in my time, since I've been here, I don't think I have voted.
It may not have been. So I'll, I'll get you the information on when we first let that contract and then what time is left.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
I would just add, you know, when you walk in and you see the Rhino exhibit for the zoo, it's probably 10 feet in size. No, probably five feet. Then you go down and you see two full walls of casino advertisement being, you know, put out there. There are far more positive and better things like Fresno State, the Tower District, Downtown, Chaffee Zoo, that can be promoted and can highlight our region beyond just your typical advertisement. I mean, I would ask you to revisit the strategy on simply just outsourcing advertisement for the sake of generating $170,000 and instead looking to promote the region that pays for that airport.
Yeah, and I think what we're going to see moving forward is more dynamic signage, meaning we have the flexibility to put in marketing for the region and what's going on in the region. You know, I just got in front of me, 50% of gross the airport gets on the advertising, sorry, going back to council member Soria's question, and it expires in 2023, which is actually good because, you know, we want to get the, the new facilities in place and then there's an opportunity to re-up the entire thing. But we're moving towards, and the advertisers are moving for more dynamic, not static.
Can you give us a copy of that contract?
Yes.
I'd like to know when it was first approved.
Yes.
Next up is member Brettafield.
Yeah, and I just want to say, I don't have a problem with your advertising at all. We need to generate income. You're doing that. As I go through the airport, it does seem like the region is promoted. Perhaps we can do a better job at promoting the region, but I think it is promoted as I, as I go through it. Do you feel that the region's being promoted, Kevin?
We do. In fact, we reach out to many different agencies and invite them to provide video content for what's happening in the region.
Mm-hmm.
And to the extent that those individuals, those organizations have video content, they'll submit it to us and we'll put it out there. So, and that's, that's an open invitation to anybody, anytime.
Okay, so it does happen. I mean, I think sometimes up here, we have folks who think they can dictate to the private sector, who should be a part of this and who shouldn't be, and they like certain segments of the private sector and others they don't. I don't think we get to do that. And the bottom line is we put out opportunities for people to advertise their businesses, whether it's a casino, or it's a restaurant, or whether it's Fresno State, or whatever it is, you know, we don't get much say over that. We, we have people who want to promote what it is they do. And we welcome that and we want the increased revenue. So I think you're doing a good job. I appreciate it. Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, and back to council member Arias's comment. So in our contract, we also, when, when there is like vacancy, like there's no, there's some, some, some of their ads on the walls, but there's nothing there. They haven't sold anything. In the contract, it requires them to put in promotion for the community or for the region as a filler. And sometimes those fillers stay there a long time, plus on the video content that they control, like in the baggage claim, for example, we get like 12 seconds, I want to say it's 12 seconds every minute of our content. And sometimes we work with like the food expo and others to insert that stuff to try and promote the region.
I'd have curiosity, given council member Brettafield's comment, are we allowed to advertise cannabis operations at the airport?
I'm sorry, what?
Cannabis operations at the airport? Or is that, are those restricted? If you can just get back to us on that?
Yeah, and it may be in concert with the attorney's office.
Yeah, absolutely.
We could do some research on that.
Just a reference of all industries, I wanted to see if cannabis is one of those all industries, given that it's legal in California.
Yeah. I think generally airports have stayed away from that because there's like global, global gateways and on a federal level, it's not legalized. And so we be a little cautious about that, but we will circle back with the attorney's office on it.
Kevin, the screen is clear. So I think what we're saying up here is the blend, as you've been doing with advertisement, might be the best thing for Fresno and District Four and our Central Valley. So good job on that. And I wanted to say that I know the airport is very secure because I see Chief Messenger here and I admire his job that he does out there, and I know you do as well.
Yes.
And he stretches limited resources as far as he can. And same with your team. You guys are fantastic. I can't say that enough. We are an enterprise and we are functioning quite well. So thank you all very much. And I'll take it out to the public now. Anyone in the public wish to address this item, that is the airport's budget, please come forward and we will, happy to hear from you. Seeing none, we'll close that part of the agenda and we'll move on to the next budget item, which is Information Services Department.
Counsel, Information Service Department budget starts on page B-75. Its major funding source is Internal Services Fund. It also has some general fund support as well. Total overall budget is $21,899,300. That's a 31.8% increase over the amended. General fund budget is $377,000, and that's up 5.8%. Total permanent FTE positions are 64.25, which is a 3.25 increase over the amended. The department's core operations is funded through fixed and variable reimbursements from user departments via interdepartmental charges for services. I mentioned earlier that the general fund is budgeted at $377,000. It's related strictly to the 311 call center, and that is fully funded. The department's total available funding is at $25.8 million, of which the biggest piece of that is in internal service funds functions, and they are budgeted at $25.4 million. Within that, there's about a 4.2 million increase from amended budget. Key items that are part of their core service increase is $409,000 for security assessment improvements at City Hall, $370,900 for contractual obligations, and that includes licensing, annual maintenance, and support for citywide programs and software. Also, there's a million five for additional funding needed for the citywide network system replacement annual lease payment. The department's overall appropriations are budgeted at $21.9 million. It's an increase of 5.3 above the amended budget. And of this 5.3 million increase, their non-personnel appropriations include funding for, again, $409,000 for the City Hall security assessment, $454,800 of the increases for maintenance and support, primarily for acquired software increases and contractual obligation fee increases. There is also a $2 million budgeted for contribution towards the lease financing of the replacement of the PeopleSoft Financial and Human Resource Systems. And lastly, there's a million five in additional appropriations for, again, the citywide network replacement program. Moving on to their staffing, their budget does include three new positions for the department. These positions are funded strictly by internal service funds. One position is for a computer system specialist, a second is for a geographical information system supervisor, and third is a network system specialist. Counsel, that concludes my overview. Department Director and staff are here for your questions.
Thank you. Just for the record, has the budget changed since it was presented on the books?
It has not.
Thank you. Councilmember Soria, you have the floor.
Just have a couple of questions. On the 311 call center, how many staff are dedicated for it?
Total of five. We have a supervisor, we have a senior, and the rest are call reps.
And what are the hours for them?
The hours are six to six, and we have after-hours call center which takes care of after-hours calls. So it's an outsourced service.
And how much do we pay for that?
About 38? I believe it's 38,000 a year for that.
38,000 and it covers what?
It covers overages.
Under 6 p.m.?
I'm sorry, yeah. After-hours, holidays, overages. If we have a flood of calls that the call center can't take calls for, it'll, it will then go over to the after-hours call center. And the after-hours call centers takes care of, they have instructions for a lot of different things for, for different departments as well, for on-call staff.
How long have we had this after-hours?
Since, Ben, when I've been here, 2003. So it's due for, we just, we just re-upped their contract, but it does need to go out to bid. We do need an RFP. We're looking at doing one.
So we're expecting this fiscal year, you guys are going to come to us with a new potential contract?
This coming fiscal year, we are investigating that. Yes, we were, we, we would like to go out to RFP for that.
Okay, perfect. And then, couple other questions. So that there, there is an increase of 84,600 to cover the increased volume of city copier contract?
Yes.
Are these, these are for increases for copies made on department copies only? Or can you explain that?
Yeah, it's a copier contract, the citywide. Everybody has, of course, you have a copier in your area, also network printers, copiers, faxes. And so there is an increase in the, in the contractual obligations for that particular program. But they are for copiers and citywide, yes.
So like in our department, like the council has one?
Yes.
Okay. Does this cover if we start copying more or less?
Yes.
Or it's just?
It's both.
Okay. Is this the base and then we get charged if we go over a certain amount?
Okay, it's been based on historical and actual, so this is what we're projecting for it to be come up this fiscal year.
And if we copy less, the amount will go less or?
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we don't pay, we're budgeting for it, but if there, you don't, you don't copy as much, you don't get charged as much, is that's correct?
Okay. So I guess I'm wondering, why is it that we're going up so much, 84? Is there a reason?
The addition of color?
Doing more colored copies.
Color copies, uh-huh.
Okay. Also, I noticed that we're doing some replacements of like software, PeopleSoft Financials and HR systems is what we currently have?
Yes.
So what is the need or benefit in replacing what we have?
Currently, that process is out to RFP. We expect the responses to come back July 2nd. And then we'll go through the process of finding the right vendor for the city, and we believe it's going to be in the fall that you'll probably see it, council will probably see it here.
What are some of the things that we're looking at that will be improvements from what we have?
Under that, under that process? So currently, a big one is we're stuck on Internet Explorer 11. So that browser we're stuck on because of the current PeopleSoft replacement. People, our current PeopleSoft version is several years old. It doesn't have some of the newer features such as mobile features. It, it, we're looking at replacing payroll, we're looking at projects, we're looking at HR functions, grants, financial functions, project management, I think I said that one, asset management to a T. But basically, it's, it's the entire functionality of when you put your payroll, your, your time sheet in, plus purchasing POs, purchasing, everything is going to be replaced on a personnel side and also on a financial side.
So what have we budgeted for this fiscal year?
Well, that's part of the increases that we have. We've moved $2 million from the, the, we have a reserve. We've moved $2 million down to ISD's budget this year. And we're not sure exactly what it's going to be. It could be, you know, 10 to 15 millions of dollars to replace this, or we could have a subscription base, base of cloud, but we're also going to have to have resources come in and help us implement the entire software for us. So we have $5 million in the reserve right now.
$5 million?
But we're moving...
Plus those $2 million? Or we're moving those $2 million out of the five?
We're, we're moving the $2 million.
Okay, perfect.
So this year, we'll have $5 million.
And are all these general fund dollars or how are these reserves?
It's, it's a mix, I believe, correct? Yeah, it's, it's a mix.
So it's a blend depending on like?
Yes.
The department?
Yes.
Okay.
Because every department's going to be affected because every department uses it.
So on an annual basis, what are you guys keeping for reserves? Is this typical that we have a $3 million or a $5 million? Or is it just because we're looking at replacement of network and programs?
Normally, it's because we're doing a replacement. So we have been putting away money in the, in the PeopleSoft replacement fund, I believe a million a year for the past few years because we knew it needed to be replaced. We're stuck at our current version, so we can't go any further. So that's why we started to go, and we did this in the recession year. So obviously now, we're ready to be able to do this. So, but we don't normally have a reserve for equipment, and that's kind of why we came back with the Cisco network replacement about a couple of months ago with you guys. And, but we are looking to make sure that we do have plans in place for replacements when we are ready for antiquated equipment or its equipments to be end of life, so.
Perfect. Is that separate from equipment replacement that different departments want to do?
As far as desktops concerned?
Yeah.
Yes. And we are looking to bring back the desktop replacement plan also.
Is that included in this budget or?
No, it is not, not this fiscal year.
So when you're saying that you're, that's for, you guys are planning for next year?
Yes, next fiscal budget.
And what is that amount or?
We don't have it yet. Right now, we're exploring to figure out what needs to be replaced and what we need to have on budget, and then also to come up with a reserve for that particular process.
Okay, perfect. And I'm assuming you guys have done or are doing an inventory of what we have?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Another thing, just in terms of kind of our, our network, because it's kind of still slow. And I know that we, every year, it's like, you know, we probably sound like a broken record asking, but any future plans to improve the, the speed of the network? I know that, you know, one of the other things that I had, I have mentioned in the past too is the websites that are being blocked. And so sometimes it's hard for our staff to do research on policy issues or just do some of the work that we need when we're dealing with our constituents. So what are you guys doing, one, to speed up the network and then two, dealing with kind of the blocking of certain websites?
So first of all, there is our dollars in this budget to increase our network speeds, to double it for AT&amp;T, and we're also looking for a third internet connection as well so we have resiliency. As part of the Cisco replacement project, we will be replacing our browser, our browsing software. In other words, the software that lets us get out. And right now, we're in testing. I do believe ISD is the first ones testing it, so I, I don't want you blocked from the, the sites that you need to get to. I don't want that. So we're looking to figure out what we can do, and this new software is supposed to be able to allow us to do that, be secure enough, but let you have more access. So, and that is right now being tested.
Okay, and so you mentioned, so AT&amp;T is our provider for City Hall?
Yes.
And for all the entire city in terms of our network?
We have, we have two right now. We have AT&amp;T and we also have Time Warner, which I believe now is Level 3. And we're looking for a third. And the third one might be CVIN because we're looking to see if we put a third one.
Which one?
CVIN. So there might be a third one. We're looking to get a third. We want resiliency. And CVIN is a partner of the city already, and they also have connectivity to a lot of our, our current facilities. And we're looking at the southeast waste treatment plant to put the third one in because we're actually looking to put some equipment out there.
So on these agreements, how, how often do we go out and, you know, how long have we been with AT&amp;T and?
We've been, we've been with AT&amp;T a number of years. We usually go off of, of the CalNet agreement, which is competitively bid already. But there are not, there are not that many providers here in town. You've got Level 3, you've got Comcast, you've got Time Warner, and you've got CVIN. And the last time we looked at Verizon, we looked at Verizon, Verizon was too cost prohibitive. So we have been keeping our eyes open on the atmosphere and who's in town, so what we get access from.
Who, who does T-Mobile work with? Because I know T-Mobile's been expanding their, their net, their, you know, network. And I know that they're coming closer to us with a call center not too far here in a neighboring city. What, what provider? Because I think they merged, right? T-Mobile with one other?
It was either Sprint or AT&amp;T. I can't remember exactly which.
Not AT&amp;T, for sure.
Yeah, I believe it's...
Are they, are they able to be part of this or?
No, they're mostly a wireless provider.
Okay, they're just mostly...
They don't have those types of services in our, in our area.
Okay, perfect. So right now, it's AT&amp;T, Time Warner, CVIN potentially, you said?
Yeah, there's, there's a few, there's not a lot, so, in our area.
And that will, the more folks that we enter into agreements will help our speed or how does that work?
It gives us diverse paths in case something goes down, but we are planning on doubling our AT&amp;T bandwidth, which most of it, most of our traffic goes out currently. And the other thing too, is the configuration changes that we're doing with our network will also streamline the, the process because our current network is 13 years old and it's, there's a lot of things that need to be redone with it.
How much is the cost for doubling our speed?
$500,000, $500,000, I think. Is it 500, this amount? Was it five hundred this amount? For the internet speed, five thousand? For doubling our internet speed? I'll have to get back to you on that one. I can't remember that one exactly. It's not a lot. It wasn't a lot.
So why hadn't we done it if it wasn't a lot?
We did some last year. We updated last year. We do occasionally. Part of what the issue is, more services going on our network and plus configuration issues that we've been having.
What's the timeframe? So we just pay them and then they double up our speed, or?
Uh, we currently have entered... We've asked them to double it, so probably be within the next three to four months or less. A lot of times, we ask the AT&amp;T, sometimes they have to make some configuration changes, but it shouldn't take long. I can get back to you on what the time is on that.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you so much for the work, and I appreciate your guys' staff is very responsive when we have issues, so we want to thank you guys for all of that you do.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Next is member Arias, followed by member Chavez.
Your proposed budget is requesting three additional positions from the last amended budget.
Yes, sir.
Where... How are those positions being funded? Is it all through increased charges to respective departments?
Yes, I believe so.
What are we going to get in return for that additional staffing?
So the three that we're asking for, GIS supervisor, our GIS team is becoming more, busier and busier as GIS becomes more prevalent in the city. And we are becoming, you know, we're having a hard time getting all of our projects done, so we need some more staffing there. So GIS supervisor for this GIS division. We have a... We used to have about nine to ten people in our communications division. We're down to two. And so we take care of the public safety radio network. That's what the... So there's a network support specialist for that to help. Mike Doty is our communications manager. He not only takes care of the public safety network, which is the radios, the communications, he also takes care of a lot of the cameras, a lot of BRT cameras. He's got one person with him to work with him. We're getting him another person to help him out because we're seeing an increase in cameras and radio traffic. The third one is a CSS. It's a desktop specialist, primarily to help fire. So we are working together with fire, and we're going to share the resource because the fire is in need of some more resources, and we're going to work with that in that respect.
And since it's helping fire and police, why wouldn't it be a general fund obligation versus interdepartmental obligation?
Council Vice President, the way it... The collecting, if you will. So ISD is an internal service fund. In the fire department's budget, under their ID charges, there's a budget so that ISD then can charge them. It'll go against the fire department's budget, which is general fund. But then ISD is collecting the money in their ISF revenue.
Got it. So when the budget was announced, it was stated that we were only adding three positions through general fund?
That is correct.
Correct, right? And those related to planning?
That is correct.
However, it's also correct to say that the general fund is actually funding a lot more positions in the city, including ISD, through charges to the general fund departments.
Through an internal service fund, it is being... The general fund is being billed
Correct.
for their service.
So the general fund is funding more than three positions citywide?
Well...
It's a... How else would you describe it when he's not paying for the positions through his budget? He's paying for it by charging the general fund department?
The collection of the funding is coming from the general fund.
So how many new positions total does this budget propose to fund, irrespective of the funding source?
I don't have that in front of me.
Could we get that from the city? Thank you. I just want to make sure people understand that it's not... There's just not three general fund positions being asked for in this budget. There's a lot more. They're just being described as interdepartmental positions.
Okay.
Thank you. And on technology, I'm sure you're aware of, I'm pretty dissatisfied with the infrastructure in the city of Fresno when it comes to technology. What is the customer, i.e. the council offices, any other department, any other city employee that currently uses our information system going to receive as a result of millions of dollars of new investment?
So you're going to see a few things. First of all, with the Cisco network, we've talked about opening up the browsing more. Second of all, we're moving to Office 365, of course, and that will give you some mobile apps and mobile presence, because I know that there's a lot of people... Mobility is coming. It's here. It's passed here. We have other mobile offerings that we also do for the city, but you're going to see Office 365 become a little more cloud-based and mobile-based. The other thing is, with the ERP software that we're putting in, also more flexibility, and there's also should be a mobile component with that. So we're going to see some enhanced functions and features and be more up to date than we've been in the past.
Does Fresco reside in your department?
Fresco is supported by ISD, yes, but it's administered jointly with the other department.
Who determines the functionality of Fresco and what features get added?
That would more be... Right now, TJ and I work together on it. The problem with the software now is it is an Acela product now, and there's not a lot more we can do than what it does right now. So we've often looked to see maybe about looking into this Fresco and figuring out what else we need to do with it.
So Fresco is basically tapped out as a... They're believed to improve or add features for the purposes of the city?
We've asked Acela and Fresco several times, what's your upgrade plan, what's your upgrade plan, and they have always promised us. I can double check with them, see where they are again.
But that doesn't mean, Brian, and correct me if I'm wrong, we can still add additional service requests.
Service requests, yes, I'm sorry. Service requests, yes.
What you're asking. We can add additional service requests, and those are usually determined by, you know, there's a miscellaneous category that's in Fresco, and TJ monitors with the departments what service requests should be added and vetted before we release them publicly. And there's actually a component in tomorrow's budget hearings regarding Fresco, and TJ will be in the audience then if you have more questions for her.
Perfect, thank you. And last thing for me on information systems. You guys play a pretty critical role with responding to public records requests
Yes, we do.
that the city gets every day. Is there a reason why the city attorney can't have access to the information system so we can more quickly respond to requests?
He does have access. We implemented Clearwell for the email. So a couple things. First of all, at their request...
If you could just walk me through, what's a typical process for somebody making an email request under the PRA? Who gets it? Where does it go?
Sure. Right now, since ISD is the guardians of all of your information, what we do is they ask for a search request, we pare it down, we hand it over to them to look for it, look at it. So that's kind of what the process is. And we have two software applications now. One's Enterprise Vault, the other is Clearwell. And one of them is an archiving software. The other one allows them to do it, put tags on it and look at it in many different ways.
How long does it typically take for you to pare down an email search or produce an email search for the purpose of review by legal?
Could be hours because of the amount of information that is in the record store. However, after Thursday, I can tell you, I can give you a better estimate once we pare it down to a fewer years.
Assuming that the council is going to approve deleting all those emails?
Yes, sir.
How many people do you have dedicated to this work?
I have one in a backup.
One in a backup. Are you prepared to deal with the onslaught of requests for digital files related to the police officers' video cameras?
So if we don't do the video cameras or the digital files, that's PD. We take care of email, basically is what we do. ISD is in charge of the email system. We don't give them the records, the files, electronic files. The departments do that, and we just take care of the email piece of it.
So PD is responsible for looking at their own videos?
Yes.
And assessing what's releasable to the public?
Yes, with the attorney's office.
Who does that in PD?
I do not know. Doug would have to... Or Francine could tell us that.
Francine, do you know?
I'm just trying to understand, just in public record release, because typically, you're supposed to be housed under one entity, and it's usually IT is the guardian, given that it's all, you know, information?
If it's the body worn camera, it's stored on evidence.com, and that's usually Vicky Delone. If the PD, that provides that to us. If it's videos of other varieties, usually someone from IA provides it to our office, and then we review it for privilege.
Got it. So currently, you have ISD manages email request only, PD manages video request?
Yes.
And then all the written documents are... Who manages those?
It depends. If it's a file, that's like an IA file, it comes from the IA division. DC Carrasco is over that right now. If it's reports, they come from their clerical division. So there's several spots that we go to get all the correct...
Okay. And if it's any other department, the department is responsible to get us the files to review.
And out of curiosity, has anybody been trained? Has there been a common training for everybody who handles public records on what's releasable, what isn't? You know, has there been any conversations about streamlining our internal process or getting ready for the release of the ongoing and routine release of police records under the new law?
Yes, we have several people trained in city attorney's office. The department provides it to us, and we do the review, and then we are providing it back to them with the redacted portions, so they can have a final review before production.
But the department at this point can still screen out certain videos, right? Because ultimately, they produce the videos for their legal counsel to review.
Generally, the procedure is that they provide us with everything to the city attorney's office. We review it for privilege and tell them what needs to be produced.
Okay. Thank you all. Those are all my questions.
Counsel, I think the other issue tagging along with this is, if there was a direction to make whatever we are producing to one person who requested records available to the public, then I don't think we have the capacity right now to do that. And we might want to discuss that.
Say that again, so...
For example...
We're going to have to get ready to release police records, right? Video camera documents under the new law effective January. We have multiple media outlets asking for the information. Wouldn't it be simpler for us just to grab the information once everybody's reviewed and signed off on it, post it on the website, so everybody can access it directly themselves versus having to deal with individual transactions? Is that technologically possible now?
Okay, well, right now, the way we're producing it is the files are so large, we can't do it by a link or a PDF file. So we are doing it on a flash drive right now. And there are two speeds of flash drive. We are... We've been told that the downloading time is so long that we need to use a 3.0 instead of a 2.0 that we've been using. So that's how we plan to do our first production this week, is on a 3.0 flash drive. So the question is, is what would we have that would have the capacity to upload that volume of, I guess, information? Because most of the files, the one we're producing this week has nine hundred and forty pages, forty-one audios, and fourteen videos. So it's a lot of information.
So from the IT perspective, what would you need to do, or we need to do as a city, to... Because this is going to continue going forward. We're making huge network upgrades to our systems. What do you suggest we need to do now to make this more available? We wanted to have a transparency webpage where everything's uploaded, folks don't have to bother to come and pay parking meters downtown, you know, house on numerous staff for information that we already made public. What would it take?
So working with the attorney's office, we could do something. We could do... We could basically have a website that, for the particular videos that you need. So talking about uploading speeds, we could figure out why that's having a problem and what we can do with it. Probably get them their own VLAN or their own connectivity connection to, or carve out some connection for them if that's really a big issue for them. But I'd like to get... I'd like to work with them a little more and figure out exactly what their issues are so I can understand them. So sometimes, we don't hear the issues firsthand.
Yeah, it sounds like we need to meet internally before we...
Yeah, it would be helpful. And just keep in mind, what I'm trying to think forward on is, this is going to be standard for us as a city.
Sure.
It's going to be routine, but we're also considering making people come into metal detectors, which is going to lengthen the line to get into the building. I'd rather not be hassled by the media, the press, or the general public when they're asking for something that can easily be downloaded off the webpage. Thank you all.
Thank you. Member Chavez, it's your opportunity.
Thank you, President. Brian? Is it Brian or?
Brian. Spelled a little different. It's got the Y in there.
Spell with an O?
It's spelled with an O.
Okay, it's not a typo. All right, Brian.
Yeah.
All right. Got a couple questions. So I know we've had some conversations about our own internal ISD systems, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the more of the infrastructure for our city. Thank you for meeting with me, by the way. And I know there's some very sensitive conversations going on with communication providers. I don't want to go into that. I think maybe council members could be briefed separately, but I did want you to speak about what a 5G network would mean for the city of Fresno as far as capacity and what that is compared to what we have now.
Okay, so on 5G, the biggest thing with 5G is you need more antennas. And so right now, you see some antennas here and there in the area, about three miles apart, but now you would need antennas a lot closer to get the same job done. So you're going to see more antennas in the neighborhoods, in the business parks, along the streets, and that's kind of the gist of it. Because when you... For 5G, you need more bandwidth and you need more presence to make the speed work. And the further the distances you go, the more the signal drops off and the strength of signal and the speed drops off.
And then as we're making investments, I know we talked a little bit about, I think it's important for folks to know, the fiber investments that we're making. Is that going across the city? Or are those only in areas that we have actually worked on a street or a project?
So currently, we have a partnership with both Public Works and Public Utilities. Public Works, we use the ITS system, which is the intelligent transportation system. And that particular system, there's conduit. We use the conduit and the fiber there to connect buildings and cameras and video policing cameras and BRT cameras. That goes down our major thoroughfares, which are basically Kings Canyon. There's a map online, but Herndon, Blackstone, Shaw, anywhere the ITS system goes, we go. We worked with Public Works on that. And recently, last couple of years, we worked with Public Utilities, and as part of their Purple Pipe Project, as part of their recycled water project, they are giving us conduit to go into the parks, to go into the other half of the city, so we can cover the entire city. But now, that's going to be going into neighborhood parks, and wherever the recycled water goes, we'll be able to have a conduit that goes there as well.
Who is paying, or what is the funding mechanism for these fiber investments that we're making?
They are through the projects themselves. Each project comes up there. That's what... They get paid through via those projects.
The investments we're making in our own public streets, the city will own that infrastructure?
Yes.
And then the last, it's not really a question, but it's more of a statement. We spoke about this, I think, as we get requests from companies that are wanting to invest and expand their business models here, I think it would be also helpful for them to be partners in helping us provide these services where traditionally, we don't have communities that have access to that. And we talked about community centers. We talked about areas where kids have after-school programs. So I think it's important for you to flag that. And then the last piece of this is, when do you anticipate that this will come to the council for consideration?
Which piece, sir?
The 5G conversation?
The 5G, probably in about a month or two.
Okay.
Because we are working with, currently on a license agreement for the carriers.
Great, thank you.
Brian, while you're up there, a couple of questions. On the carryover, did you... I was out for a moment. Why is the carryover so high? I'm looking at page eighty. It looks like addresses that. Could be wrong. I think you talked about it earlier, five point three million. Which is an increase of two million plus.
Council President, that five point three million increase, that's actually the increase in appropriations. That's not carryover.
Then there's proposed additional funding. Is that carryover, or where is the source of that? Looks... To me, it looks like two million dollars. Top of page eighty. Beginning balances.
What's carrying over, Council President, is there's two major activities. One is the network, anticipated network lease that needs to be covered in twenty. And the second one is, I believe, the security for the city as well.
And do we have a breakdown? I know we don't want to go into the security system itself, but I see numbers all over these pages referencing the security aspect of this. I don't know. Do we have a number that we've actually spent?
I'll have to get that for you.
Okay. And then I thought I recall the administration... And then, I thought I recall the administration saying there would be two new positions in personal services appropriations, and those would be through DARM. And now, we're seeking three positions at page B-79 for ISD. Is that correct?
There are, there are three new positions for the Information Service Department.
Yes.
And that is under their Internal Service Fund.
It's not going to be DARM?
No, under the DARM department, they are also budgeted for three new positions as well.
Okay. I'll look at my notes and see what I can come up with on that. And then, I'm looking at B-78, interdepartmental services, new security assessment charge increases 88,000. Is that separate apart from the other assessments, charges for the new security system?
That is the appropriation side, that you're seeing the increase of 88,000.
Mm-hmm.
But in totality, what's budgeted is 409,000.
So that's, as they say, lock, stock, and barrel, that's the total amount we anticipate?
For the, under the Internal Service, Internal Services Department.
Okay. And I looked here and I saw a B-77, right column, something from my staff in particular, it says they budget their non-personnel appropriations, includes $150,300 for licensing agreement, and 84,600 price adjustment for increased volume of city copier contract. What would be the process to get an additional copier for the, for the districts, that is districts 1 through 7? The copier we have, it's, you have to wait, we have a line back there, and it keeps jamming as well as the sign indicates. So we need some improvement with our own copier.
Just need to request it through us.
Okay, I request.
Okay. We'll work through it with you, 10x process, but we'll work through that with you.
At least equal, if not better, because that's a pretty dated machine. And there's lots of people that are using it all the time, it seems.
We got that, so.
I appreciate that, thank you. I think that's it for me at this time. Yes, thank you very much. Anybody else have any further questions? Screen is clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll take it out to the public. Anyone in the public who should come forward and address this item, please do so. Give us your name, address, and we will give you three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close that portion of our budget hearing. Next is Personal Services Department.
Council President, council members, the Personnel Department's budget starts on B-103. The department has two primary funding sources. The first one is the General Fund, as well as the Internal Service Fund. Their total overall budget is $36,728,700, increasing by 2.1% over the FY '19 amended. Their General Fund is $3,566,600, which is a 10.6% increase. Total permanent FTE positions are 38, with a .75 increase over FY '19 amended. The General Fund portion of their budget funds their general operations, such as administration, organizational development and training, and labor relations. The department's Risk Division, which encompasses workers' compensation, property, liability, and the unemployment programs, they fall under the Internal Service Fund classification. Their total available funding, and it's primarily by the Internal Service Fund, is at $36,785,700. Significant changes include a decrease of 5.4 million to their beginning carryover, and that is a reflection of the Internal Service Fund's reserves have been depleting over time. However, there is, in the internal departmental charges for services, that is budgeted to increase by roughly 5.4 million. And this is a need to offset the anticipated depletion of reserves. As far as the department's overall expenditures, it is budgeted at 36.7 million above, and it's above the amended budget by 739,000. Of that increase, 342,000 is under their operations, while the remainder is in their Internal Service Funds. As far as staffing, the department has no new added positions to their budget. The slight increase of .75 reflects last year's budget, that the positions they received, and that was three, is now fully funded in FY 2020. That concludes my overview.
Thank you again, appreciate it. Director Cardell, did you want to say anything in addition to that, or would you like to go to questions? All right. Member Soria's first, followed by Member Arias.
Thank you. That was a very quick presentation. Couple of questions. One, on kind of the risk management side of things. So, the council has been very supportive of community events by passing council ordinances regarding parades in the city of Fresno, as you recall. These changes were necessitated due to the many dedicated organizations that fund and conduct these parades. We're having, they were having a lot of difficulties and challenging times in getting the permits issued on time and trying to understand and keep up with the escalating costs, which is why we ended up changing some stuff. However, it seems like every year, we continue to face maybe different challenges in getting these permits, and I know that you guys are responsible for a piece of that. I'm just trying to figure out, have you guys developed, for staff purposes, some parade procedures, requirements, and costs? Because there's these organizations, for example, Pride. This year, there was another issue that at the end, I'm grateful for the administration working with us at the last hour, where the folks were given additional requirements, and this event has been going on for 20-plus years, they've been doing kind of the same. So what have you guys done to implement the ordinance that passed a couple of years ago? Because every year, I get the same complaint by the various organizations that are trying to do these parades. Our goal was to streamline and to make sure that we were consistent, that we weren't treating groups differently, because that was an issue. And so, what are we doing to make sure that the process moving forward becomes much more streamlined and that we're consistent and we're not telling people one thing and then changing their requirements at the last minute?
You know, that's not actually done in Personnel Department. Jeff's piece, Jeff's department's piece is basically the insurance requirement.
The risk management portion.
Right, right. And Jeff can speak to the risk, the insurance, let me back up for a second. Jeff can speak to the insurance requirements and how he's expediting those. But it's my office, along with the Finance Department, that organizes all of the special event permits and makes sure that we streamline those citywide.
Okay.
And so, Jeff, do you want to answer the risk management portion?
Sure, I'd be happy to. From the risk management perspective, we are ensuring that all of the staff involved, all the staff involved associated with approving the insurance requirements truly understand that these are events that are meaningful to the community and that it's our objective to try to figure out how to get to yes, not to get to no. And along with that, our Assistant Director, Marissa Gonzalez, is leading that charge.
Okay. Have we done anything, and maybe this is also to the administration, because there's been changes in trying to expedite and streamline the process? Have we put out a public document so that people can just reference on our website and know exactly what to expect when they come?
I have Laura on her way out right now, my deputy city manager, but she is working on that, as well as making sure that there's a one website to go to for everything, because, you know, just to streamline and make sure that the information's out there. But she and actually TJ Miller are working on a process internally with all of our impacted departments.
Okay, and so, I appreciate that. I think that that will be helpful for folks. On the risk portion that you guys are involved, so I know that this process becomes very complicated because there's so many departments involved, but on the risk portion, one of the issues was in this recent event for the Pride Parade, was that the requirement was that every vendor was also required to have insurance, which was a new thing again, and this event hasn't changed, at least in my time, it has been consistent. So it was a new thing, so that's what I'm saying, every year, there seems to be a new barrier. I know it was fixed, but I just want to make sure that we're talking about it publicly so that if it got fixed this year, we don't have to deal with it again, because it takes a lot of staff time from my office to deal with that. And I just hope and wish that this process truly is streamlined, so that it's not complicated for folks that are, every year, doing the same thing here in our community. So, you know, I hope that, moving forward, we've dealt with the fact that we don't need to require the folks that are vendors or providing just informational booths, additional insurance, because that was a requirement that was asked of them. So is that going to be consistent now for moving forward in terms of, for future, so that they know?
I believe that with the entire group, we're trying to ensure consistency going forward with each of these events. So, yes, to the extent that there aren't any additional changes, I would imagine so.
Okay, perfect, thank you. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, because it's an issue that I'm very passionate about, is the summer youth internship program. And so, I appreciate your office working, or your department, working with us to try to continue to create a robust program in our city. I know that there are a number of departments that participate. I know that there are other departments that haven't yet participated with the summer internship program. The first year that, after 2017, when we approved the program, we got over 1,000 applications. In this last year, this, just recently, we got 500, and it was a very short window because of kind of the flood of applications. So there's a tremendous need out there in the community, and I know that there's also a tremendous benefit to the various departments. I don't know how we can move forward to make sure that we're creating a robust, and maybe this is more for the administration, creating a robust internship program so that our kids have opportunities in every single department, even in personnel. I know that I've spoken to our city clerk's office to make sure that they also use it. I know that our city attorney has been working with a variety of schools trying to do internship programs. But I'm just trying to figure out, how can we begin to create a culture that really, you know, promotes that our departments use and train our young people during the summer? Because I know that we've only put a few people to work during the summer.
If I may, first, there are departments, such as Personnel, that actually employ interns year-round, rather than just in the summer, because there are learning opportunities that present themselves throughout the course of the year, during the spring and fall semester. And, for example, in our department, we do have an intern presently who is assisting with our subrogation efforts and learning how risk works in collecting as a result of property damage. I know that DARM has interns throughout the course of the year and some other departments as well, but the opportunity to use these funds that have been set aside by the administration and council to employ additional interns throughout the summer is an opportunity that has been certainly accepted by several departments, as you spoke of earlier with airports, as well as the council district offices. And so, there are a limited amount of funds that are available, but beyond that, the departments have the ability to utilize their existing personnel allocation to bring on some interns to help support their operations, as well as provide that learning opportunity that will hopefully lead to subsequent employment in city government, or county government, or in the public sector.
So the dollars that we've been allocating for summer internships, we have allowed to use them during the entire fiscal year, or are we just focused in using them for the summer?
Those are for the summer internship opportunities. The additional sources of funds throughout the course of the year, that's the departments using their existing allocation.
Their discretion, okay, perfect. So, as I mentioned, the first year, we got 1,000 applications. Just recently, we got 500 in a very short period of time. Obviously, it's a lot of work to go through these applications. Just, how many staff members do you have working on this specific internship program?
Two individuals, this is one of, just one of their assignments. We have an analyst who's reviewing the applications, and then a certification, an analyst who certifies those applications out to their respective departments.
And can you maybe explain how they go through it? Do they go through every single application? Do you guys go through maybe the first 100 and then make recommendations to the council, the various departments? I'm just curious as to how that is functioning, because of, you know, I know we've had some inquiries about folks that.
Sure.
Never get told, like, hey, you know, thank you for applying, but maybe next year, we've, you know, so what are we doing to not discourage these young people, right? When they've submitted, they've made their best effort in submitting an application? To at least make sure that, one, they're contacted back by the city, but, two, how are we doing the process of reviewing?
So the process, the individual person identifies one or more departments that they're interested in an internship with. How we have been moving those or certifying those applications to the respective departments is on a first-in, first-out basis. So as the, unless there's a particular request that might be coming from a department that they know Jane or John is going to be applying as an intern, presuming they actually do. So we then forward the applications to the department, and when we do so, we identify that if there is a need for further applications, please let us know, we'd be happy to forward them.
Just because, do you believe that's like the best process, or is it just because we do have limited staff? Would it be better to have a dedicated staff person kind of coordinating the internship personnel responsibilities? Or, I'm just trying to figure out, because this is something that's important to me, and I know that.
Sure.
In terms of jobs and, you know, the mayor's commitment to create job opportunities, I think this is a great way of training our young people, and maybe eventually, they'll become, you know, our Personnel Director, or our Publix Director, or just, you know, some, one of our employees here in our city. So I'm interested in seeing how we really make sure that this program is much more successful and being able to augment those opportunities.
This is one way in which we can manage the flow of applications to the respective departments. It's not the only way. We'd be happy to sit down with a member from council district staff, or whatever department, and say, okay, here's all the applications we've received that express interest in X department, and we'd be happy to help you screen through these, or if you'd like to take them all and screen through them yourself and schedule interviews, we're open to process and what works best for the respective operations.
Okay, perfect. So my office would love to sit down and figure out.
Okay, great.
How we can work on that. So we'll make a follow-up after budget time. The other thing that I just wanted to, and those are all the questions that I had, I do want to make a motion to continue supporting and extending these internship programs, but rather than just the summer internship program, I want to make a motion for, to invest $100,000, and that would include so that year-round, we're able to hire interns in the various departments, so that it could support and, support departments, but also train the young people and hopefully create a pipeline for these folks. So I'd like to make a motion to be able to do that this next year.
Motion by Member Soria, seconded by Member Arias. And we'll move on. And we'll move on, the screen is clear. So Jeff, I just had, if you would, explain what this means. So I'm looking at page B-106, under workers' comp, liability, and property, there's a common reference to cost allocation plan, AKA cap. What does, how does that work? I'm not familiar with that. It touches at least three areas on a single page, so how does that work, or what's it all about?
Council President Capriolio, the cost allocation plan is a method where we have general fund, if you will, functions, such as, such as council, city clerk, mayor's office. And there's certain aspects of those costs that then are distributed to non-general fund activities. And so what you're seeing is that portion of that cost for the general fund, then then gets applied to non-general fund funds.
Is that a normal
So it's a form of recovery of the general fund costs.
So we're recovering that through the cap program?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I see a lot of interdepartmental charges of the offsets and that reference, so that makes sense now. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then one last question, are you fully staffed, Jeff? Do you have enough people to keep the, keep all the balls in the air?
We are, we have filled all of our current positions. It's always a challenge for us to keep all the balls in the air, but we're doing our best.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to you and your team for all the good service you provide
You're very welcome.
To the city of Fresno. Thank you.
Council President, I do have some questions.
Okay, Member Arias has a question or two for you.
Okay.
Can you walk me through the risk management determination for insurance levels? Back to the events that we have, as you know, I represent downtown, and there's a lot of events. My understanding is that the rates have increased significantly when it comes to the insurance that folks are required to have. And I know in the world of insurance, it's all based on any past incidents. I'm not aware of any incidents that have created liability for the city, so I don't understand why there's been an increase in the insurance premiums that vendors are required to acquire.
So premium is different than the insurance level? So the premium amount, if we're
But the insurance level should be dependent on the risk that they pose, and risk should be determined
Yes, yes.
Based on past incidents. So you've increased the levels of coverage required by vendors, based on what evidence?
I would have to look at a particular event to determine whether or not there has in fact been an increase in the level of coverage that's required. There may be endorsements that we have been asking for, which would be different than maybe what has been done in the past. And the reason for requiring endorsements is that is what actually effectuates the transfer of that insurance and saying that the city is insured. Without that endorsement, that transfer doesn't occur. So that may be one element. The insurance market in and of itself, in terms of premiums, continues to endure a variety of losses. They may not necessarily be subject to the city of Fresno, but generally speaking, an insurance company may be adjusting their premiums. For example, if a vendor is utilizing the special events insurance program that is offered to them through our broker, that special events insurance program may have seen a variety of losses over the course of time, and so they make rating adjustments. In terms of the insurance levels themselves, the minimum requirements for a given event, our objective is to try to ensure the protection of the city first and foremost. And so that when the event is held, we are essentially measuring the risk, what could occur, knowing full well that something hopefully will not occur. Hopefully, there will not be a need to call upon the insurance. But we are, with every individual event or similar types of events that have the same nature and scope of activity, trying to ensure consistency first and foremost.
From my experience, what we've seen is inconsistencies from one year to the next. And there's been a huge cost burden that's been now transferred to event promoters, participants. I'm still wrapping my head around why we would require somebody to get $300 a day per minute for a tent on a sidewalk to offer information on health. It doesn't seem to me that there's a clear correlation between our new and higher expectations and any history of incidents involving any event in the city. At least, I'm not aware of any events that have created a legal liability for the city. Have there been any in the last few years?
Associated with?
With events, like has there been sidewalk damage, the street damage that has required us to honor and pull down the insurance that people have acquired?
Off the top of my head, I'm not able to provide you with a comprehensive response on that.
That's fair. Legal counsel, could you help us out? I know our purpose, like for like a street food vending event or anything like that, is to protect the public works assets, right? Sidewalk, damage to sidewalk, damage to the streets. Is there any other legal requirement that we're supposed to protect ourselves against?
Well, first of all, yes, liability claims. For most liability claims, we have a $3 million self-insured retention, essentially a deductible. And as a matter of policy, the city, as directed possibly by the council, can say, for any event, we want that $3 million covered. That means the city's essentially not exposed. Or depending upon the relative risk that we're talking about, you can choose to do something less than that. In other words, if we were employing an outside consultant who's going to work from another location, not drive, not do anything physically other than work from a computer, the risk is very, very low. So really, it's a matter of risk assessment.
And what I'm looking for is consistency for everyone. I also want to make sure that we're treating the Veterans Parade, the Christmas Parade, Pride Parade, all the same when it comes to our level of support, our expectation for liability coverage or premiums, calls for road closures. I want folks to have a clear understanding of what the expectation is, so that we're not spending all of your time in the 11th hour trying to get administration to intervene on whatever misunderstanding or new standards that were said by whomever. And one of the things that I'm finding quite challenging is that the folks who typically approve these permits and set these insurance premiums have never been to the actual events. So I would like folks to expose themselves to the events that they're approving and to walk an event in preparation for the following year's event. And if there's justifiable, and there's evidence to require higher standards of coverage for the city, then impose it. But if there isn't, then we should be cautious about simply making those kind of community events more expensive for folks who are typically nonprofits and are trying to make money off it.
You know, I'm gonna, I would like to jump into, and Laura can speak to this if we need to go into more detail, but, you know, we look at each event, each event is separate, and we look at each event to see what activities they're offering. Some of them may be, in the case of the P-Bid, for instance, there's a beer garden or something else that we have to make sure there's adequate coverage from, versus the Veterans Day Parade, which is just a parade. So we look at everything as it comes in, and then determine the level of coverage that we need. Jeff, right now, is working on an exercise for me to see if our insurance requirements compared to other cities, what we're requiring versus other cities, and if we're, you know, looking at best practices to see if we can lower those requirements. So I want to make sure that you know that we're trying to be as consistent as possible in, but events are different.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that you're comparing to the cities, but I'd really like us to assess whether we have any history of liability, because that should determine. If I have five speeding tickets, I pay a higher insurance premium than Councilman Bretterfield, who has zero. You know, that's fair, that's the way the market should drive. Now, if you just determine that I should pay higher premiums when I have the same driving record as Councilman Bretterfield or Capriolio, then we have a difficult conversation to engage in.
So if I may, the, I'm going to make a distinction between premium and then the insurance level required. So the, as counsel had expressed, based on a risk assessment, what could go wrong is largely what is going to drive what the requirement is associated for a given activity.
Understand, but this is not the first year of the Pride Parade. This is like the 25th year of it.
Agreed.
This is the 50th year of the Veterans Parade and Christmas Parade.
Right.
So we have our own history, and so what I'm struggling with is, I haven't seen any history of liability, actual liability that has been, you know, imposed or exposed to the city. So I'm struggling with why we just raise premiums, and I don't want to raise premiums or coverage standards based on what other cities are doing, because other cities might have a disaster that we're not aware of, or problems that we're not aware of. Thank you.
Okay, the screen is clear, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody in the audience wish to address this item, please come forward.
Thank you.
This is your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll close this portion of the hearing. It's 12:02, we have transportation left, and then a closed session item, and then we'll resume the hearings tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. There's also a 2:00 PLA meeting, so we'll come back at 1:00 sharp, 1:00 sharp.
Your Counselor, your Counselor.
Yes.
Here's a member of the public that wants to speak to the transportation budget. Maybe if you would just take the three minutes to allow him to do that, he wouldn't have to come back at 1:00?
Perfect, that's agreeable.
He's good to come back? He's good to come back, thank you.
Oh, thank you. We always try to accommodate our people. Thank you all, we'll see you at 1:00. Thank you. All right, folks, we have a quorum at this moment, so we'll start going with our next item, which is Transportation Department. Good afternoon, and here we go.
Thank you, Council President. The Transportation Department's budget starts on page B-163. Their primary funding sources include enterprise, special revenue, and internal service funds. Their total overall budget is $158,959,900. That's a 13% increase over FY '19 amended. Total permanent FTE positions are 533, and that is a change of 17.5 over the FY '19 amended. The Transit Operations is primarily funded through State Transportation Development Act allocations, Federal Transit Administration grants, Measure C, and passenger fares. These funding sources correspond to the enterprise classification. In addition, the Muni Fleet Management Division will continue to operate as an internal service fund, while the Public Safety Fleet Maintenance Division is budgeted as an internal service fund division as well. Total resources for the department is budgeted at $203,397,000 even. That's a $28.1 million increase over the amended budget. The Transit Operations and capital portions of ongoing revenues are $92.6 million. That's an increase of about $133,400. The Internal Services portion of their budget of ongoing revenue is $49.7 million. That's an increase of about $21.8 million above amended budget. And within this increase, there is $10 million that corresponds to the Public Safety Fleet transitioning into an internal service fund. There's $9.5 million for fleet acquisitions, that covers requests for new and replacement vehicles citywide. And then there's $2.3 million of the increase that relates to customer departments increase for needs of labor hours, rental equipment, and increasing fuel prices. The department's expenditure, total appropriations, is at roughly $159 million, and that's an increase of about $18.3 million over the amended budget. Transit operating and capital divisions make up $116.5 million, while the internal service funds equate to about $42.5 million of the increase. On B-166, that page will highlight contributing increases in the appropriations across the department. But a couple that I just wanted to highlight is under the personnel appropriations for transit, there is a budget to add 10 new permanent laborers at a cost of $517,300, and also four bus drivers with a cost of $267,900. On the internal service fund side of the department, again, as I mentioned, the Public Safety Fleet is now budgeted as an internal service fund. And the primary driver to do this reorg within the department, fund reorg, is that we want to be able to enhance transparency and better track the full cost of public safety department operations. And by doing this transfer within general fund to internal service fund, we feel we'll accomplish that. Under the Muni Fleet Maintenance and Fleet Equipment Acquisition, their budget is $32.2 million, and that's going to increase by $3.3 million. As far as their staffing, the department is adding new staff. And just big picture, under the enterprise or transit operation size, again, as I mentioned, there's four new bus driver positions added, 10 laborers, and there's also one utility lead worker. On the Muni Service ISF side, there's an addition of one equipment service worker, two, and then also under the Public Safety Fleet Division, there are two new positions added. One is an auto parts specialist, and the other position is an equipment service worker two position. So in total, we're looking at 17 FTEs added. Council President Capriolio, that ends my overview. Department Director and staff are here for your questions.
Thank you very much. Well done, as usual. Okay, we have some malfunctions on the screen to request to speak, so does anyone wish to go forward? Member Arias? Looks like you're the
We have to raise our hand now?
Welcome, Greg, to the seat.
Welcome.
Welcome to grade school, Greg. Greg, I know we've been talking about the potential of piloting a connecting route to the current California Veterans Home
Yes.
Back into our downtown hub.
Yes.
Do we have, I intend to make a motion to add that to, that pilot to our budget. Can you tell us what you anticipate the cost would be if we were to do that?
Well, it depends on the type of vehicle we use. So as we've talked in our meeting with the Veterans Home, we talked about using EOC as the social service provider. So it would really be the cost of EOC stepping forward. The issue was who was going to pay for that? Was it going to be split between EOC and the Veterans Home? So we're looking at roughly $25,000 is what EOC has mentioned to us to run on a daily basis out there.
So if we were to make a motion in the areas of $50,000, would that be sufficient enough space for we, for us to pilot the connection to the Veterans Home?
I really think a motion is probably not warranted. It's probably more of you and I and the CMO continuing the conversation. As you remember, we were going to bring in the state Veterans Affairs Department to figure out what they can put into the service, because it's really incumbent upon them to help out in this particular matter.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that, and I know that we're going to have that follow-up conversation, but you know, the seat of president, we love our veterans, and I know that at some point, the state's going to be limited in what they can do. So let's talk some more and see if we have to make a motion to adjust the budget. I just want to make sure that there's some funding available in this fiscal year, so that if these conversations continue, we don't have to amend the budget if we were to reach something.
We are currently actually looking at EOC's social services contract with us. We are currently actually looking at EOC's social services contract with us. We oversee their funding for social services. And so this is something we could, as we address in the next couple of weeks on their budget, we can address directly with them. I just need your assistance with the state.
Okay. All right, then we'll get the state in the room. And then just expect that there'll be some kind of motion for us to set aside money or if it's needed in this budget process.
All right.
Thank you for your help, too, on this.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No one else is on the screen, Greg. So it's you and me.
Okay.
BRT, Shaw Avenue. When did we cut the ribbon?
So we're trying to finish the ribbon cutting that we've done on the BRT 1. As you may recall, we just cut that ribbon a year ago, February. We've now seen over 2 million passengers on that particular route. We are still closing out that contract. So we have roughly $900,000 left in that particular contract that we're using for safety equipment and a couple of other things. And then, once we close that contract out, get a good bill of health back from FTA, then we can start to look at Shaw and Cedar, which were also studied in the master plan.
I know we were a little bit short on the ridership itself, but it's been over a year. So I think we kind of made up that deficit, but I don't have any statistics.
So let me tell you about ridership. Ridership is actually up 8.8% over last year. Last year was the first year that we did not see a decline. We were barely at like .04, but we had one more passenger than the year before that. That's what counts. We've already reached that goal this year. So it's for us, it's an issue of how much will that increase be? Will it be over 9% or will it continue to stay at 8.8%? So ridership is increasing.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's a great indicator. In District 4, we needed covered bus stops with benches. Can that $900,000 be allocated toward Shaw Avenue?
So you actually have a special project along Shaw and Cedar Avenue that is for new bus stops. So between Shaw and Valentine, back to Fresno State, right? Shaw and Cedar, and then down Cedar. So you have a special project with new... Oh, hi, Jim.
I think Jim wants to add some more money to the project.
With new shelters, that project will be coming to you sometime later on this fiscal year for contract award.
You mentioned Cedar and Shaw, so I assume that's the initiation point.
Absolutely, Cap.
Great.
Just to add to what Greg said, we actually launched Fax 15 on Shaw and Cedar prior to BRT, which brought that service to 15-minute services frequency. So it's already fairly quick. The infrastructure takes a little bit longer, and we did receive a pretty good TIRCP grant for that to do a significant number of the shelters at major intersections along Shaw. And we're also doing something that should help... I'll let Greg talk about this. We split the routes, and we're adding traffic signal priority.
Yeah, so Thursday, on your council agenda packet is a TSP, traffic signal prioritization, where we're asking for both the onboard equipment and the technology, which will also speed up the buses along Shaw Avenue and Cedar. So that will continue to help us with 15-minute frequency. One of the things we did for Councilmember Soria and the west of 99 area, as well as Councilmember R E S and the vacancy, is we split off Route 9, which used to come all the way down on west of 99. We split it at Shaw and Brawley and added a new Route 12. And that now serves west of 99, including Inspiration Park.
Fantastic. Screen is clear. I think that's it. Thank you very much, sir. Oh, Member Sparza? Thank you.
Yeah, he was raising his hand. He was waving.
I was getting ready to throw my peanut shells at Council President.
Shall I say the lighting is bad and I couldn't see you?
Don't say that.
Oh, sorry.
Greg, I know we have an ongoing conversation, but for the record, where are we on the Manchester Transit Center? I mean, do we have a clearer timeline yet for that project?
We are still expecting the project to be completed this year. As you know, we had an issue with the contractor, which I'm not going to get into in open session. But that contractor has now gone. And we are now repackaging small bids for some of our local folks to come in and finish that particular work.
Okay.
Because we want to get back into our home. That is our service center where, you know, we sell bus passes out of. We also have office space for several of our staff, and they need to go back home.
So later this year, probably in the latter part of the year, since we're mid-year already, pretty much?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Greg.
Yeah, thank you.
So we request to speak for a second time with the limitation of one question.
One question and one request. Can we get a closed session update on the contracting issue at the Manchester site? And it can be a closed session update on that. And then, two, Councilmember Capriolio has some really fancy shelters in his district near Fresno State that do a really good job of kind of associating the shelter to Fresno State. Is there an opportunity to do that in any other part of the district or the city as we do new shelters? Are there going to be any opportunity to add some unique designs to the ones in the tower downtown?
I think what he means is the colors and...
Right, right.
We're sticking true to our pride at Fresno State.
So what we've done is actually redesigned our shelters altogether. So we are going to go away from the colors that... The blue, brown, and brown awnings that don't really match to more of a silver grayish tone with a blue top. The first one was just put in Councilmember Chavez's district in front of Family Dollar. That was just built there at Chestnut and Church? Yep. That was just built there. So he got the first one. And we've just hired our chief of facilities after having that position vacant for most of the year. And so now we're looking out to go through and start cleaning up more shelters.
Yeah, just one suggestion. If you can add some kind of neighborhood element to the shelters, even if it's just simply a small design that references, you know, Fresno High versus West Fresno versus downtown.
Let me say, when I was on the council side, we attempted to do that with some of the high schools. The issue is maintenance. And so from your perspective, when I was talking to Fax on behalf of the council district, it was more of who can maintain it. And so, you know, those special colors...
And I'm not referencing colors. What I'm referencing is something, you know, more of the iron design or some small element.
I had thought of that as well. And we'd like to keep the Fax brand colors, the uniforms, simply so people know this is a Fax bus stop. But I do think there's some, perhaps some metal design we could do that would indicate it's, say, Hoover's Bus Stop, something like that.
Yeah, it's just some minor element.
With their mascot on it or something.
Yeah. Something would be neat that could distinguish the parts of the city.
No, we're very open to that. So very open to that. And she's going to have some questions now, Cap.
Okay. Very good. Member R E S, thank you. Member Soria?
Thank you, Council President. Forgive my lateness, but I did have just a couple of questions regarding Handy Ride. I don't know if this was already addressed. Did anyone talk about Handy Ride?
No, no, no one brought up Handy Ride. We did talk about Route 12 while you were out of the room.
Route 12?
Route 12 that goes to Inspiration Park.
Yeah. And so at first, since you just mentioned that, thank you. I know that you guys worked really hard with us to try to make that a reality. I know that the community, for a long time, was asking. So we definitely appreciate you guys' flexibility and working out something that would provide the access to public transit out there. So we're grateful for that. So a couple of, just regarding Handy Ride. So we've gone, several constituent that have reported that Handy Ride is at capacity and told they're no longer accepting, I guess, standing appointments? I don't know.
They're called subscription appointments.
Yeah. So can you maybe give us an update of what's going on? Is there a capacity issue? Do we need to expand the services? I'm just wondering how we can help because I know that there is, from what we're hearing, there seems to be a demand. Is there a plan to address?
Right. That demand is actually between 6:45 and 8:15, where we are... 6:45 a.m. to about 8:15. Well, we are oversubscribed. So the FTA only allows us to have 50% of our riders on a subscription service, which means I know Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I'm guaranteed a ride. I don't have to call. And so what we've done with Handy Ride is worked with Keolis, our current provider, to scrunch back and add more capacity in that band. But that's only been able to bring down our oversubscription. We're still above 50%, and we need to be below. And so we're going to continue to do that to get us below. Now, as a part of the budget, we've asked for some funding for the increase or the potential increase in our new RFP. We will be going out to bid this fall for a new provider. The Keolis contract is up in 2020. And so we are looking... We will be looking for a new provider, if not Keolis themselves.
Who's the provider?
Keolis. They've been around with us now since 2013.
Who else do they provide transportation to?
Locally, just us. So going back to your original question, the issue is subscription. So what we're trying to do is, as people are dropping off that subscription service, we are not replacing them at this point. Keolis will continue to work with us to scrunch their timeline so they get more buses on the road during that time so that we're able to provide more service. And we need to do... We'll be doing that over the summer because I'm afraid that as we get back into the fall with school starting in an 8 o'clock class, I got to get to a 9 o'clock class, that's going to be a problem.
Okay. So you believe that the increase of funding for the RFP will help maybe address some of this issue that we're going to incorporate dollars, though, for expansion? Because it does seem if we're trying to lower that 50% subscription, it seems like that there is a demand in our community. So I want to be mindful of that. If there are resources that we can allocate to be able to increase the capacity, I think it's going to be key.
Absolutely. And we agree. Look, several years ago, the council, when we first went to Keolis away from MV, the council and Fax really tried to take as many people off of the Handy Ride who are able to ride fixed route. And that's been successful. But that means that Handy Ride now has grown in its capacity, in its usage. And that's going to continue to grow as our community gets older. And so we need to be mindful of that. We've just recently put in a grant for some additional cutaway buses, which Handy Ride uses. And so we want to get those on the road once we receive the award because I'm pretty positive our grant writing team is excellent that we're going to get that award.
So I guess I'm trying to figure out how we can, for this next fiscal year, to build that capacity or start increasing the capacity because there is a need. Will the RFP tell us? And is there room within the existing budget where it's flexible to be able to expand the capacity?
So the two big issues that we face right now is Keolis, you know, has 58 vehicles. And they operate the same hours that Fax does. So they operate from 6:00 in the morning until 1:00 a.m., Monday through Friday, and then on the weekends until 8:00. We are proposing to soon reduce our hour, our weeknight hour, from 1:00 a.m. to midnight. But we're going to use that savings and open up a Saturday service. So we're already talking to Keolis about what effects that will have on them and how do we keep scrunching more vehicles into that band that is oversubscribed? Because that becomes the issue. At that point, Keolis has to have, instead of maybe 20 drivers, they need to have 26. They've got enough vehicles, but they need to have maybe 26. But then they've still got to figure out how to operate until midnight or 1:00 a.m., as we are, too. So that's one of the things that we are discussing with Keolis as we speak.
Okay. In the RFP, I'm interested in seeing increased capacity. So if that's something that can be included, I'd love to see that.
Okay.
I think that there's a definitely need. Can you maybe speak to how many passengers does Handy Ride provide services annually? I don't know if you have those numbers.
Handy Ride provides 213,000 passenger trips. And they drive 1.4 million miles a year. So they are...
They're moving.
They're really being used.
That's good. So I think those are all the questions. Oh, the last question on just kind of general blessing issues. So from time to time, our office receives some Fax complaints. How do you guys usually deal with those? I think this year, we've gone like five from our constituents.
So there are two ways to deal with complaints. And this... Complaints on fixed route are governed by the ATU MOU. So they have to come in one of two ways. If they come in as a verbal, a phone call, or even Facebook, it's called an inquiry. And we're able to look into it as an inquiry. If it is a written complaint, which is signed, and there are some issues right now that we're discussing with our ADA coordinator about the signage, particularly for our visually impaired partners in this community who can't sign, we are going to be addressing that with the ATU in the coming months because the MOU is really outdated, even the current one. But that particular language, we tried very hard to change. And ATU wasn't interested in it, and that's part of negotiations. But we think that even an inquiry is worth our looking into. And we do look at inquiries, trust me. With Facebook and our Facebook page and our Twitter page, we get a lot of complaints, which we have to treat as inquiries. And we do follow up with those.
Okay. I thought that was my last question, but I did just recall... I wanted to talk just briefly about the agreements that we have with our educational institutions. I don't know if you mentioned that in any previous questions, but...
No.
Can you maybe speak to, highlight, you know, what's been going on? Has it worked? I know that there's been other folks that have said, I don't know if we're doing anything with Central or Fresno Unified, and so...
So the high schools, particularly Fresno Unified, when I first came over to Fax, we had literally a two-year on-and-off conversation about how to make it work. And the district just couldn't figure out a way to make it work. So they are still our biggest, our second biggest purchaser of single-ride passes. And with State Center, their pass program, which is all year round, as long as you have an ASB sticker on the back of your card, is continuing to grow, as well as Fresno State's program. So we are very appreciative of those two entities being a part of our system and providing bus passes in the form of their college IDs in order to ride our system.
Do we know the numbers of riders that are related to these agreements?
I want to say... I can pull up ridership. Fresno City has 347,307. And that's as of the beginning of the month. That doesn't include the end of this month. That's a small decrease, but it should even out. Fresno State had 100,207 riders, which was a small decrease also. And then we did a Clovis Community van. We leased a van to Clovis Community because we could not do a bus route out to Clovis International or Clovis Community College. And that van had almost 5,000 riders who connected at River Park with our bus system and then were transported over to the college.
Do you think there is an issue in the decrease? Or is it just... Do you think there is a issue in the decrease, or is it just...
We think it's our equipment. We think it's us. And so, we're analyzing that, particularly on BRT for the city college riders. They don't have to tap on...
How, so how do you guys track it if they don't tap on?
So, when we do fair audits, if there's a fair audit, they just raise their, their ID card. That's it. So, that, you know, it's, it's, you know, because that's all we need, is proof of payment. You have to have proof of payment if a fair audit is taken.
But, but how do you then track the 347,000?
So, those are riders non-Q.
So, the ones that have the little stamp, or the sticker?
Right, that are riding other buses other than the Q.
Oh, okay.
That's why we believe there's been a small decrease.
Okay.
Because on the Q, you just jump on the front door or the back door.
Yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, it'd be good to get a better, I think, accurate number and figure it out.
Yeah. When, when we were preparing for the budget, this, this number came up, because it was the end of the year. And so, staff and I will be working to come up with a better solution. I don't know if it's putting validators on each end of the bus. We'll have to figure it out.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be great, because I, I think there's a lot of value in, in these types of agreements. I think that there's obviously a lot of success, given the fact that there's these many folks using the, the bus. So, it'd be great to have a little bit more accurate numbers. The other thing with Fresno Unified, any, is there any opportunity? Have you guys just kind of ceased any conversation about how to move forward?
We have our arms widely open to them when they're ready to re-approach us and re-engage us. It just got to the point where their, their staff felt that they couldn't go any further in the conversation, and they decided to continue to purchase, for those students who need them, the single-ride passes. They were trying to expand that program, and there was some consternation about, do they do a pilot in X area? Or do they open it up to, you know, Y kind of kids, or what? And they couldn't figure that out.
Okay. I don't know, maybe just for my colleagues, and I know that there's a few of you that are in the school liaison subcommittee, but this may be an issue that should be brought up and discussed. Because I know that, at least I've heard from other folks, that there is an interest. And I think that's a perfect venue, because you have trustees from Fresno Unified and so forth to have that discussion.
Yeah. I, I know it's a money issue on their part, you know. They've got, what do they call it, Goal Two, which is their after-school and enrichment. And they, they were talking about using funding from that particular program, but they decided to do other things with that funding, and that's totally on their board.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember. Our next meeting will be in the fall, so I'll make sure we get that on the agenda to discuss.
Yeah, I think that would be a great thing. The other thing I know that, because we're kind of, are, we're so spread out in terms of our city, and I know that we want to maximize the, the routes. But I know that for some students in like Central Unified, it's harder for them to take advantage of kind of dual enrollment programs and so forth, because there's no access to public transit. Have we thought about kind of any, I know that obviously we did some expansion, or the rerouting of bus, was it 12?
Route 12, yes.
Yeah. It was nine, right? But then it became 12?
It was, right.
Yeah. To help connect Inspiration Park in that neighborhood, which I think is, is a positive thing. But I'm just wondering, when, as it relates to kind of the west area, have, are there any future plans as to how we make sure that we're connecting that side of town? A lot of folks feel, from that side of town, feel very disconnected from, you know, the east part of...
Absolutely.
Of the freeway. And so, I'm just trying to figure out, I know we have limited resources, but how do we create those opportunities, especially for our young, young kids, right, that want to access higher education? And there are those dual enrollment opportunities, but because of lack of transportation, they're unable to take advantage.
Councilmember, our planning staff is already looking at this. As you know, the county Social Services Division is moving their client services off of Kings Canyon and out of downtown to the Pelco site next summer. And so, we have begun conversations with both the city of Clovis, the county, and the Fresno County Rural Transit, about how we service that particular center. And one of the outcomes of that has been a discussion about how we better utilize Ashland Avenue as a, instead of taking the bus all the way to Manchester, just to, and then bringing it back up fruit, going straight across Ashland. That may provide you, if our staff is able to work this out, it may provide you the opportunity that you're looking for when I stand before you next fiscal year.
Okay, perfect. I, I'm glad to hear that there's already those conversations, at least in terms of planning.
I'm gonna let Greg explain this, but he, he's being a little humble up here. You may talk about microtransit.
Oh. And then, we also will, as part of our budget, we will have a microtransit project. So, in the Fig Garden Loop area, where we have no transit right now, we, we have received three cutaways, which is the smaller buses like Handyride, from the city of Clovis. We'll be coming to you for formal acceptance of those, because we just had them valued, and it's greater than the 25,000, so we've gotta ask your permission to accept them, which we're excited to do. But microtransit will start next year, early in 2020. And what it is, is it's kind of like a dial-a-ride Uber-ish service, where you use an app, and you're able to go within that particular circle. But that also will be our pilot of how the, this opportunity works for us. We received a Measure C grant on new technology, and so, we're looking forward to seeing how that service works. And if it works, we may expand it to other areas.
I'm glad that you guys are being innovative and thinking outside the box to figure out how we maximize access to public transit to the rest of, you know, other parts of the city. The last question I'll ask, because I think, in thinking about your, the proposal that will come later to the council, looking at the industrial park, or the industrial triangle, and where Ulta and Amazon, all those, is there public transit down there?
There is no public transit there.
Okay.
But what happens is, for those individual, individuals who work the overnight shift, or the very first shift in the morning, which is a 7:00 a.m. at, at Amazon, they, and are on county social services, or receive some kind of county social services, they're able to use EOC's transit service in order to do door-to-door to that location. We'd like to figure out a way to increase that. Our dilemma has been in conversations with both Ulta and Amazon, is our first bus pulls out at 5:30 in the morning, out of the yard, makes his first time point at 6:00. There's not enough time to make a connection to get them to work at 7:00. And then, of course, you know, when they get off, we could serve them. And so, we need to figure out some other innovative ways in order to do that.
Yeah, I really encourage you guys to continue having those conversations in particular. The fact that they got, you know, millions of dollars of incentives, and they're saving lots of dollars, I think the least that they could do is provide, help provide, and do a partnership with us to provide that public transit for our community. I think what happens, you know, when we're talking about jobs and who gets these jobs, a lot of times, the people that need it the most, that don't have vehicles, can't really, you know, apply for those jobs, because they, there's no way to get to work. So, and those are the folks that we should want...
Absolutely.
To, to provide those opportunities. So, I would, you know, much encourage you guys to talk to those folks that, you know, we gave lots of incentives to be able to, you know, connect our, our residents.
We are continuing the conversations, and we will see what we can come up with.
And in particular, too, because the mayor seems to have a huge interest in seeing more development out there, I think that it's, it's important to have a strategy. How are we gonna make sure that we're connecting, again, the access point, right? Just like what we did with Inspiration Park. This is, I think, even a greater opportunity to be able to connect people to a hub of jobs.
Right, you're absolutely right.
I will just say that we, we did apply for a CMAC grant to address that issue. Unfortunately, it was not awarded to us.
Do we know why?
And I assume we would attempt again. Just competing project priorities. We were awarded part of our proposed grant, which was to increase frequencies down into the southwest on FACS 15. But we weren't awarded the grant that would have allowed us to rearrange, rearrange the southwest side of town to serve those areas.
Okay. Thank you for that, thank you for the...
We will try, we will probably try again.
Perfect. We don't give up.
We don't give up. We don't give up.
I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you, Greg.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the council? Nope. Seeing none, I will make a motion to set aside up to $50,000 to connect the California Veterans Home with the downtown hub. And then, if needed, we'll use it. If not, we'll figure out this partnership with the state and ELC.
I'll second.
It's been first and second by Member Soria. Now, we'll go out to the public on the FACS proposed budget. Anyone wishing to speak can come forward.
Good afternoon, Councilmember. My name is Charles Krugman. I live at 1237 P Street in the city of Fresno. And I come before you today not with any specific items in, in the budget, but some overall, general concerns. In listening to the presentation, I'm glad to hear that there have been some improvements, because many of these issues I have raised before council in over past years. First of all, I'm glad to hear that there is now service that serves the Inspiration Park, which is a park for people with disabilities on fixed-line routes. I thought that was very interesting, that when that park was approved, there was no service out there. One of my biggest concerns, though, is issues with the bus rapid transit and the infrequency of many stops along Blackstone. There are many people, for various reasons, that are not able to walk the increased distances between stops, and it makes it difficult for them to utilize the bus service. I am one of them at times. Due to some health concerns that are transitory, there are some days when I could not walk the extra distance between stops. And there are also many safety issues along Blackstone, especially the area between Clinton and Manchester, where there are no stops. I don't consider it real safe to have to navigate the intersection of Blackstone and Shields. It's not safe for sighted people to navigate that intersection, as I'm sure you all know. And I'm an experienced cane traveler. So, I've raised these issues to council in the past. I was told, when the BRT initially went before council, that there would be some plans brought into place to address the needs of elderly and other people that are not able to walk the increased distances. None of that has happened. And now, you are wanting to expand BRT to Shaw and Cedar? What is going to happen on those routes? I have found that since the implementation of BRT and the change in service with buses no longer having Manchester as a transfer, transit point, my use of Fresno Area Express services has actually diminished. And I used to be a regular user all the time. Finally, it was recently brought to my attention that I can no longer purchase FACSs in, from a person in the city of Fresno, and that I am forced to use a kiosk if I want to purchase bus passes here. I don't think that that's really acceptable, and I think that if I were a business wanting service from the city, there would be plans that would be made to meet the needs and encourage the use of the city of Fresno City Hall for purchase of services. I've raised this issue with members of FACS staff and with the ADA coordinator, but this is not an ADA issue. This is also an issue for many elderly people that are not comfortable using kiosks and other automated technology. So, I hope that these issues are addressed, and I just wanted to bring these matters to your attention. I know there were fact-finding sessions in the middle of January, when we were having the severe cold weather. I, for one, was not able to attend those due to the timing and the locations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Krugman. Mr. Barfield, can you address the questions or the concerns that were raised, including the availability of where you can purchase access cards?
Yeah, so, recently, UBNC decided to discontinue selling bus passes here at City Hall. When we went through this process, because they sell them on our behalf, when we went through this process, we thought we had come up with every solution possible by putting a TVM, ticket vending machine, right outside the door. So, now, you don't even have to come in. One of the things that Mr. Krugman brought up to us recently, and that we're now looking into how we get around it, is he uses a check. And the, the machine does not accept checks. So, we have re-engaged a conversation with UBNC about what we can do in order to not only support him, but others like him that may be faced with this issue.
And just for my clarification, so does the company get to determine all those decisions? Or does the city retain some authority over the ultimate decision on how they process checks?
Well...
Oh, is it utilities?
It's, yeah, public utilities, yeah. It's public utilities.
Wow.
So, so downstairs, you know, on the first floor, where you pay your water bill, you could also buy FACS bus passes. And that has just discontinued as of May 1st.
What's the rationale from public utilities for removing that feature?
It was just a business decision on their behalf, and we're re-engaging a conversation with them now.
If we...
Yeah, we can, we'll investigate that a little bit more, because I was not aware of that either. But we will investigate that and see what justification there was, and whether or not that is sufficient, or whether we can start up the, the selling of bus passes again.
Thank you. We, we'd like to remain customer service oriented, so if you can get back to us, that seems to be like an easy endeavor.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Assistant City Manager?
I have a teeny bit of history on, on that one.
Some people still use checks, right?
And, and a lot of this is, I think, is, it's kind of like, how do we best serve the most people? And so, it, it, we have to make some compromises sometimes. In this case, I think they, UBNC was trying to reduce the wait time for services, which the majority of their services are, to pay bills. Discontinuing bus pass sales there was a, a method for doing that, and the kiosk was the method for mitigating. So, now, we're seeing it doesn't mitigate everything, so we have to...
Yeah, you know, no, it's, it's clear that we need to serve everyone, and not just...
We do need to serve everyone. I think we just missed the check part.
Okay, fair enough. If you can get back to us, hopefully, before the budget hearings are complete?
I'd like to have a point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
For the last couple of years, batches of passes, when I purchased them here at City Hall...
And, and that was a function of the divisions moving around.
And they're generally at times, had been for a little reason.
Yeah. Okay, well, it looks like...
We will try and address the issue. As far as the, the stop distances, that was a decision that was made with a, a lot of debate. Once again, the, the reason for bus stops that are spread farther apart is to make the service run faster. More stops means you'll have to be on the bus longer. So, that was a conscious decision, and that was brought in front of council, and, and we have seen the benefit of those increased service times. The alternatives are Handyride, of course, and that might be why we're seeing more frequency on Handyride. But, you know, as I said, there's compromises when, when we try and run these services. We can't, you know, speed up the service in too many ways. One of those ways was less, or more distance between stops, traffic signal prioritization, all those things added up to streamlining that service.
Understood. Thank you again. That brings an end to the public hearing, budget public hearings for the day. We're now gonna go into closed session. Legal counsel, is there anything to publicize about our closed session?
Yes, we have closed session on City Hall security. There will not be an announcement afterwards.
Thank you all.